We're good, how are you?
And now call the February seventeenth, twenty twenty Fisher City Council meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your Republic on which it stands, one nation under our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. We're gonna start with announcements this evening. I wanted to share a little bit about March Disability Awareness Month. March is National Disability Awareness Month, and for the fourth year, the Fishers Advisory Committee on Disability and the City of Fishers will host a month-long celebration to bring awareness to what life is like for those with physical and intellectual disabilities. This year's presenting sponsors include Connor Prairie and Fishers YMCA. With this year's theme, Focus 2020, we will focus on the past, present, and future of disability inclusion in Fishers. So we'd like for you to join us for fun events throughout March that celebrate the contributions and talents of those with physical and intellectual disabilities in our community. Discover opportunities and resources for education, inclusion, employment, accessibility, and accommodation. Honor the role of our local caregivers and those who serve as direct support providers. Explore how we unite with community partners to advocate and support the needs of our residents. Help us acknowledge our successes as a community dedicated to making Fishers an inclusive, accessible community for all abilities. So I just want to mention a few highlights of some of the events that will be featured in March. March second, from eight-thirty to ten a.m. at Fisher City Hall is the March Disability Awareness Month Focus 2020 kickoff. It is free. Join us as we kick off the month-long celebration with a special event featuring the stories of three local caregivers who care for loved ones with disabilities. Learn more about this year's theme, Focus 2020, with a special video by Brian Brosmer with Brosmer Photographic, and this event will be livestreamed. On March sixth, at Connor Prairie, from six to nine p.m., there'll be a celebration of inclusion through art reception. This is free. The Fishers Arts Council, Fishers Advisory Committee on Disability, and Connor Prairie present a visual arts reception featuring artworks provided by various community partners, organizations, and local artists with disabilities. Artwork will be available for purchase if agreeable by the featured artists. This event will also include a silent auction to raise money for local organizations. Appetizers and refreshments will be provided. Throughout the month of March, Fishers Arts Council will exhibit artworks by local artists with special needs at the art gallery here at City Hall around businesses. And also, artists will display works around the nickel plate area for National March Disability Awareness Month. On March twelfth, from eight-thirty to ten-thirty at Connor Prairie is an event called Coffee Talk, Looking at Employment Differently. It's free, but registration is required, and we invite local businesses to attend a morning of coffee and conversation to explore how they can meet their business needs by employing individuals with physical and intellectual disabilities. Fishers businesses and organizations will share their own stories and discuss resources and providers that can assist with hiring and retention efforts. On March twenty-eighth, at three o'clock and seven p.m. at the Switch Theater at the June Lee Music Academy, the event is called Focus on Talent Variety Show. This variety show is six dollars and fifty cents per person. Enjoy a fun-filled variety show featuring local performers showing off their skills and talents hosted by local news personality and Emmy Award winner Angela Buckman. These performers share two things in common: their unique abilities to amaze and entertain, and the fact that they have overcome disability. New this year, local businesses across Fishers are offering deals and discounts on Tuesday throughout March to honor the celebration of March Disability Awareness Month. New events in twenty twenty include a reverse job fair, the variety show, and a film screening in partnership with Heartland Film. New community events include additional workshops and art exhibit at the Hamilton East Public Library, a film screening of the nineteen-twenty silent film The Mark of Zorro at the Switch Theater, and a comedy show presented by Fishers resident Scott Long, and more. So to learn more about Fishers' March Disability Awareness Month, please go to www.fishers.in.us/disabilityawareness. We don't have any proclamations this evening. We do have a presentation by the Fishers Junior High We the People Champions. Teacher Mark Fazel is here. This team has just recently won the state championships, and they are going to DC for a chance to win the national championship. So I'd like to have Mr. Fazel here to talk about the We the People at Fishers Junior High.
Well, I'm gonna go ahead and ask some people out. So if I can get my three folks from my seventh grade team, I'm sorry, eighth grade team to come on up on this side, and can I get my alum on this side? Well, first off, thank you. I think this is the fourth time that we've been here. Elliot still throws me off every time I look over. Elliot was a counselor for me at Camp Tecumseh when he was in high school, and I've known his wife's family forever, and I know the story of how they got engaged, you know, where him and his wife met at New Britain when they were in second grade, I believe. And I even know that he proposed to her on the swings at New Britain.
Do you have some pictures that we can display here?
Yeah, I actually probably do have pictures, but I'm sorry. But anyway, so Tati sends something to me, and he asked me a very poignant question, and the question was, what was the impact of We the People on kids? And I thought, wow, that's a really good question. That sounds like a question for my alum. And so I have representatives from five years' worth of teams here. These are my current teams, and of course, we have won the state championship. The current freshman class, sophomore class, and junior class were all state champions, and they all competed at Nationals, and these guys are getting ready to go in May. And I have one senior here, and Matty's one of my favorites. We basically missed out on winning state that year, but that team taught us that we could actually compete. And so they were huge for us. But I'm gonna go ahead, if you can indulge me for a second. I will be, I told them they have to be quick, Tati. They have to be quick, and I want them to tell you the impact of it. Now, if you have questions about our efforts this year, then I'm gonna go ahead and have these kids answer these questions, because for some of you that know me real well, I will never want to talk when I have people that are more qualified to do it than me. And so that's these guys. Now, Matty's a senior, and what I'm gonna ask them to do is, I'm gonna ask them to tell you very quickly the impact that We the People had on them.
So my name is Maddie Horn. I'm a current senior at Fishers High School. I was an alum of the twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen program at the junior high, and I also recently competed on the high school team for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year, where Mayor Fadness actually came in to talk to us a little bit. We were state runner-up for both years. We the People has largely guided my educational career since I found out about the program in seventh grade. It shaped the way that I put together my high school schedule, and it shaped the way that I'm planning to pursue my secondary education. I'm in higher education for college. I've been accepted into pre-law and political science majors for every college I've applied to so far. I'm currently serving as student leadership for our entire student government, schoolwide. But I want the most important thing, and arguably the only thing you take away from what I say, if nothing else, is the importance and the danger of a single story, which is what We the People has taught me the most. Especially in these very divisive times, we were learning rapidly that if you're sticking to a singular news source or a singular story from any person, you can always get a warped view of what's going on. And We the People taught me the importance of always make sure you're finding the facts, you're finding the true data, and you're really finding what the heart of everything that's going on is. And I feel like We the People not only teaches you how to be engaged civically, but also engaged as a human being. It teaches you the true importance of how you're viewing your news sources and how you compete as a daily American citizen.
I'm a little short. My name's Tatiana Lockridge. I am a junior now, and unlike Maddie, I'm going down a more science, but STEM route during, like, in my schooling. But We the People has definitely taught me to be passionate about almost everything. I have not done a TED Talk or talked to people that hasn't been about civic involvement or the importance of being involved in civic duties and what it looks like when people don't vote versus the amount of people that do vote. And it taught me leadership. I am leading the Fishers High School robotics team right now, and I am a coach, assistant coach for a basketball team, and just being a leader and what it means to have kids look up to people and what it means to have somebody, yeah, just basically look up and have an outlet for somebody.
I'm Izzy Alexander. I was on Tatiana's team. I think We the People is really important for kids to have this opportunity to be so civically educated so young in life. One of the things I remember hearing the most while I was on the team is that I was smarter than a lot of adults that my adult, like, my mom's friends or my dad's friends knew. And that was kind of, it was nice to hear, because I like being smart, but also, it was a little hard to hear, because I don't like hearing that there are people that are running our country now that aren't as educated on constitutional law and the basis of our government and the fundamentals of a representative government that I was, and I wanted to be able to be sure that the next generation is as passionate about democracy and republican government as I was, that we were able to educate a new class of citizens that were able to be more educated than their predecessors. I think that's what the most important thing about We the People is, is that it educates children, and that is something that we need to really focus on and make sure that we understand the importance of educating the next generation.
Hello, my name is Naiju Plasis. I was part of the class of twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, class of We the People. One of the biggest takeaways that I had from my year of We the People was that you're never too young to get civically educated, and that being educated at an early age can allow us to develop, I guess, our knowledge of how the government should run and democracy as a whole. And if you start at a younger age, it allows yourself to develop more and become like a more educated voter, more involved citizen, and I've kind of taken that into my personal educational life, because I know, I've been known for the, when I was really young, that I wanted to go into law, and my current plans are to be a lawyer at some point. And I guess We the People was kind of what started my journey, because I already knew that's what I wanted to do, but that kind of pushed me forward, and I think it's important that a lot of, not only just students in general, but especially younger students are allowed to get an opportunity to push what they want to do future in their lives, and it allows us all, I can say for all of us, that we've all enjoyed our years and that it's educated us a lot about the government, how it works, and what we should be doing in order to be a more involved citizen and more informed citizen, and that being an informed citizen kind of brings us all together, and it allows us to develop our societies in a positive way.
My name is Tieran Bass. I was on the team with Nia, and when Fazel asked us to speak tonight, I kind of started playing through my eighth-grade year in my head, and kind of like a lot of us have said, what's the most important thing? And honestly, everything was important. Everything that we did, it built civic education for us, it made us not ignorant. I remember one of the things that both him and Mr. Sturgeon would tell us often is if somebody says something and there's silence in the room, that means everybody agrees. And their point in that was to make sure that we weren't holding in our opinion, and because he knew all of us had a solid opinion and where we stood, and that was a part of the class. But it helped us give us a voice, and you know, as an eighth grader, it also opened up doorways to the adult world, just having conversations about politics with my grandmother and just kind of people in general, and it also just got me comfortable with talking to adults in general. And something that's really opened up for my high school years now has been I joined a club called Students in Action, and it's a service-based organization similar to like a National Honor Society or something like that. But we're especially focused on connecting with our community. And this year, we've actually started a group called Community Connected, which I'm sure a few of you have heard about. But it's, our main goal is trying to build a relationship with our fire and police officers here in Fishers. And just, I mean, sitting down, we had our first meeting with the chief of police in August, and sitting down with him, I found myself just kind of relaxed, and I was like, okay, why is that? I mean, this is like the chief of police, and I'm a sophomore in high school, sitting down with him. This shouldn't be a thing. But I realized it should be, and that's kind of what We the People has done, is opened up doorways. And at a young age, that's really important for just kind of us to get out in the adult world and be comfortable to talking with just adults in an everyday setting.
Hi, my name is Limley Scott. I was from the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen class of We the People, and We the People was important to me, because it gave me opportunities like this to talk in front of people who actually care about civic education and teaching in the younger classes about civic education. And We the People taught me to be a leader. It taught me to work well in groups, and it opened up many doorways for me. I'm the class president of the freshman class at Fishers High School. I'm a vice chair historian for future black leaders, and We the People gave me those opportunities and that confidence to have that voice, to be able to talk in front of people like you again. And it was making me passionate for things about politics and being able to understand why things are the way they are and how government around us works. And I think We the People is important for generations to be able to have these important conversations and not just tell them, well, you're not old enough to know yet, because they are. They need civic education.
Hello, my name's Malaika Ansari, and I was part of the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen class. For me, going into We the People, it was scary. It was something new. I had never been in an environment where politics and government and all these things were talked about, and I was scared. But then, through We the People, I learned how, even though I'm young, I can still make an impact in my community. I can still become civically educated, and I can still make a difference. We the People helped me find my voice and helped me, and led me to be able to use it when I'm older, and helped me make decisions for myself and for educating the rest of the community on how to help our government be better, how to help educate people when they don't know what's going on, and just being able to decipher, like, decipher when there's false news and when there's real news, and kind of figuring out what's going on, because there's so many media platforms and it's so confusing at so many times. So We the People helped me kind of calm down with it and be able to see where I can figure out how to make my voice heard. Thank you.
I'm Griffin Chesborough. I was in the last team with Limley and Malaika. And one thing on a human level that I learned is just how to work with people. Often, being so young and being in these political times, we don't really know how to work with people anymore, and one thing I learned through We the People is cooperation. I was in a unit with vastly different political opinions. We had a more conservative-based person, we had a more progressive-based person, and we had definitely like two moderate people, and through that, we had a lot of more political-based discussions. I've been in pretty much any club in a lot of sports that you could think of from a young age, and through this, I learned the number-one program that taught me these life values is We the People, because you had to work during the school day where you're tired or have projects in other classes. You had to sit down and work with the people that you often didn't really naturally agree with on things, and it taught me how to work with people politically and just on a human basis, and I think that's something that we need more of in today's society, of just working with people, no matter what the topic is. Thank you.
All right, so if you have any questions, I'd be glad to give you to an expert, which normally is someone on my right and left. Yes, sir.
Reference back to the lady that talked that she was smarter than her friends and adults, and I'm glad you brought that up, honestly. If you watch Jesse Waters on Fox, when he goes out in the community and asks these questions, how dumb the community is every time, every time, every time. You are involved because it's a club, correct?
No, we are a class.
Your class.
I'm their eighth-grade social studies teacher.
Oh.
We just are a little bit on steroids.
Okay. Do you feel HSE and Fishers is doing a good enough job educating your generation so that you're not smarter ten years from now, your kids won't be smarter than you? Are we doing a good enough job here?
I think there's always room for improvement. There was just a class of twenty-four of us. There could be an entire class more kids in more generations that are worried and not just the kids who were chosen in the class.
And honestly, one of the things we argued to the judge with any time we could was slipping in that We the People should just be a baseline social studies class, such as, I mean, like for high schools, we're required to, we need con and government, and We the People is a powerful class, because you get kids who may not want to do it.
So it should be a mandatory class, then?
I think it should be pushed to all levels, not just for a class of twenty-four kids a year.
And also applying knowledge, often with old knowledge for all these classes that you guys might get, but applying that knowledge is definitely important in how we promote civic education.
I'm the only one up there that's following the program, focused junior high and high school, because I'm sure a lot of them aren't planning on doing it anyway. And like, I agree with the same thing, I'm in a class that I think is about six hundred, maybe seven hundred, and there were still only twenty-four people that chose to take the We the People class.
Wow.
We need to look at, we look at how many math and science classes are required, and we're only a part-time government class. I think that in certain jobs, going that goes so wrong in math and science, you look at every school day, you can still say, there's a lot of people, I think the thing that you need in your life, like, you should be able to go through and tell that to them.
And those are the kids that are gonna vote on the policies that we have, so shouldn't they be educated enough to know what they're actually voting on?
Good point.
Hold on, just gonna remind them that I taught them how to talk.
They will continue.
And they will continue. There are people here who've judged my kids, so I'm gonna go like this.
You sure were right about them answering the question instead of you.
So they, correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, but when you've had us come in to help during those times, it's been their lunch period. I think they were gathering their lunch.
Right.
They sacrificed their lunchtime, they go get their lunch, they come back into the classroom, and they start having these discussions and learn about this. And one of the reasons I asked Mike to come, not only to recognize them again as state champions, they're getting ready to go to Washington DC for Nationals in April, is that correct?
We actually, this year, will leave in May.
May?
Yeah.
Okay, wow, okay.
The first week of May.
So the challenge they run into is because this is, this is an extra thing. This is not something that they're required to do. Mike gives his time in addition to being a teacher, outstanding teacher. Two of my boys have already had him, hopefully the third. He's going to seventh grade next year, so hopefully. But, you know, what's your quote about it's not something just because somebody says it's something?
Fossil Rule Number Nineteen, saying a thing does not make a thing.
What?
Fossil Rule Number Nineteen is what?
Saying a thing does not make it a thing.
Saying a thing doesn't make it a thing, and that's what my boys have learned from him. But the thing, the reason why I wanted to bring him here is I wanted our body to hear the heart behind this. He is paid out of his, he probably won't want me to share this, but I'm gonna share it anyways. He's paid out of his own pockets to get students to be able to actually go and participate. And it's a heavy financial burden for them to go to Washington DC. When they sign up for this, it's not really a planned thing. It's not like when you, when you join a sport or something, here's the, here's the price sheet, you start paying it, or a field trip, you start paying it. And so I'm asking for us as a city to consider setting aside some sort of money, I don't know what, you know, what's appropriate steps to do that, I'm just throwing that out there, to be able to help this program, because, like they say, there's very few students in totality in relation to the student body that are involved in it, and some of it, I think, is regarding, because of money. And so, as a world-class city, and I believe if you listen to these students, they could go on and on and on for the next few hours, and we would all feel pretty dumb, right? We would all. So what's happening to them is they're, it's transforming a next generation, and I think we could set an example, even nationally, that a community rallies around. We don't rely on the state or the federal government or anything. We're just this community to rally around these students, to help them out. So that's what I want, you know, that's what I want to propose. I don't have a number in mind. What is the cost to go to Washington DC for your group?
This year, I think we're fifty-two to take everybody.
Fifty-two thousand to take everybody.
You know, and we...
And how much have you raised so far?
From the community, about ten, give or take. We are kind of lucky in Indiana. I mean, I don't know how much, I mean, some of you are, know, Hamilton Southeastern, we are a big program now, in, as far as Nationals go. Two of the top programs in the state at the high school level are Fishers and Hamilton Southeastern. Liz Pater, Noster, Janet Chandler's programs, those are huge programs. Fishers finished second this year, Southeastern finished third. I mean, we're, it's a, we're a big program, and this year, we beat Fog Creek out of twenty-one hundred and forty possible points. We beat them by three, you know, and I feel bad because I worked really hard to get them better, or as my kids will tell you, I work really hard to get them beat. And, you know, but I think as a district, it's important, but you know, the financial thing, I don't ask kids whether or not they can afford to go. I select kids.
So that's just my comments.
Mayor, is there anything that you can, at least, find in the budget?
Yeah, let's, let's sit down and try to figure that out. I mean, obviously, I don't have anything tonight, but...
I thought you had a big, we're talking about the big chat.
But I think, obviously, in today's world where, you know, partisan politics has gotten so, so cheap in retail, the fact that there's intellect right here standing before us, having thoughtful discourse and ideas is really, really fascinating and such a core value of what our community needs to be about. So I think we'll put our heads together and see if we can't fall in line and be supportive of all of you. So thank you for your accomplishments, and go get them in DC, all right? Well done.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mark? Oh, Mike, Mike, sorry, I keep calling you Mark.
I remember my age.
Mike, where would the community go to if they wanted to donate?
We have a GoFundMe site. The greatest local journalist in the history of local journalists, Larry Lannan, has put out the GoFundMe. I can send you, we were just in the, there was a feature just done in the Current Magazine that has the link, but I can go ahead and send it out for you with that. But, you know, our community is generous, I will say that. We have a dedicated group of parents that have gone out, and I think if you're a business and hang a shingle, one of my parents has been there, you know? So we are, we are lucky that way. And, you know, and I'd be remiss if I did not talk about the state legislature, the Assembly, they have a funding line for We the People across the state, which is one of the reasons I think Indiana is such a great program. It is not funded like that in every state. So because of that, participation-wise, we have more teams participate at the middle school level than probably any other state, which has led to us to have, you know, a strong program out of here. At the high school level, I can't even remember the last time that a Indiana team did not finish in the top eight, you know, in the country, which just says something to the quality of the programs that are here. One of the things that I will tell you that is... Uh, one of the things that I will tell you that is a challenge, there are not many pure public schools that win. We, you know, we compete against magnet schools and districts that are twice our size, that has seven junior highs, that they have one junior high magnet school for civics and government. And so we're just a little public school, and there are not many of us that actually compete at that level.
Well, thanks for all you do, Mike, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, Mike. Thank you, kids. It, it really is an incredible group of, of students. They, they are our future, and I, I hope that, uh, we can, we can help them out in, in one way or another. We have another group of wonderful Girl Scouts here that are visiting us today, wanting to get their government badge, and so I'd like to welcome the Girl Scout troop of 4152 here to our City Council. Do you like to stand up, girls, so you can be recognized? They're here to learn about the legislative process, so we welcome you here tonight. So next up is the Finance Committee Report, John Weingart will present the Finance Committee Report.
Senator President Cobal, um, we did meet last week on the Finance Committee Report. Nothing actual from our perspective. We do review a draft of the financials. My mic is on, Todd.
Yeah, that, that looks like the battery goes out, and there I'm better. Um, there are no actual items to, to vote on. We did review a draft of the financials and, um, I'm losing my mic, I'm sure you're- And we ended the year basically with a, um, positive balance of $800,000 in our general fund, so it was a good year from a financial performance perspective, at least from a draft perspective. Let's all have a report before this microphone goes out on this one.
Okay, thank you, John.
Thanks, Todd.
Next is item number six, it's the Consent Agenda. It's a request to approve the previous minutes, meeting minutes on January 20th, 2020. The executive session, January 20th, 2020, and the regular meeting, February 10th, 2020. We have, we have one item on the Consent Agenda, a request to approve the previous meeting minutes, which consists of the work session minutes and the regular meeting minutes from our January 2020 council meeting. So do I have a motion to approve the consent?
Second.
Motion to approve, second, motion to approve by Pete, second by Todd. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
In all abstain.
And one abstention by David George, so the motion passes. Next is item number seven, R012120E. This is a request to approve amendment to rules of procedure for the common council of the City of Fishers. This is the second reading, um, I'm gonna introduce the resolution by Chris Greisel.
Thank you, Council President Cobal, members of the council for the record. Chris Greisel, attorney for the City of Fishers. Uh, we did have first reading on this last month, and as a reminder, we're bringing forward an amendment to the council rules of procedure to allow certain planning and zoning items to be heard by this council body for a first reading. Uh, the council adopted its rules of procedure in February of 2018, and at that time it decided not to, uh, consider first readings on certain planning and zoning items, knowing that they would go to the Plan Commission for their public hearing before coming to council. I think two years into the process, the council sees a lot of benefit in having the first reading to provide all parties, uh, with comments and direction before going to the Plan Commission. Since the, uh, first reading, I have received a comment, and it is a good reminder to the council to understand that once first reading does come back before this body, if for some reason council were to deny a first reading, it wouldn't necessarily prevent a petitioner from going to the Plan Commission, as Indiana law allows them to do, to have that public hearing. It wouldn't be very practical, as you know, because they're an advisory plan commission, and the, uh, the, the, the plan would come back to the council for a final reading. But I did receive that comment, and I think it is a, a good note to point out. So with this amendment, first readings of planning and zoning items would come back before the council, before going to the Plan Commission for their public hearing. Happy to answer any questions on that.
The, the, public hearing, is that the first reading then?
No, no, Brad, so what will happen is like tonight on some of the planning and zoning items, will come to council for first reading, they'll then go to the Plan Commission for their statutorily required public hearing, and then they'll come back to council for a final consideration after the Plan Commission certifies its proposal.
Are we gonna have a public hearing at the second reading?
No.
So the only public hearing to us is the Plan Commission?
Yes, that's correct. The Plan Commission has public hearing on all zoning matters, as you know.
Okay. But that's typically been the statutory public hearing. Those documents, if anybody says anything, um, there, it would be in the minutes that come back to us, and then, uh, we, if we have so cheesed, and we've opened up a public comment here, I think that's maybe what you're thinking of, Brad, which I think would still be our prerogative to do that. Is that correct?
Certainly, if, if the council thinks they want to provide public comment for any time, it's there. It's just not required by law right now. The, the benefit of having the first reading is so that you all can provide comments and direction to petitioner and staff before they move forward for their public hearing before the Plan Commission.
Thanks, Chris. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution 012120E?
I'll make the motion, but is this a second reading or a third reading for final?
Second.
So we have a third reading too?
No, if you vote to approve it, you can-
Okay, then I'm, I'm gonna vote to approve item seven.
Okay, motion approved by Pete, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by, uh, John Weingart, any discussion?
I, I have a comment, um, something to think about, maybe under the inspiration of our We the People students that arrived today that, uh, shared with us about civic engagement. One of the things that I learned, uh, participating in a city council meeting in the, in the audience, is, um, just a structure that allows for, um, an ease of a, uh, resident to follow the meeting. I, I would like to consider the opportunity to add to the procedures, uh, following, just having it stated about Robert's Rules of Order, and following that as a procedure, uh, for this body. I think, um, that is recommended in, uh, the municipal handbook by AIM, but also would provide some consistency, uh, no matter who picks up the gavel from year to year. So, I'd like, uh, I share that for consideration.
Senator Congressman Ver, are you making an amendment to the motion that's on the table?
Yes, if I can do that, I guess this gets to my point, doesn't it, right?
So then the amendment would be to make reference to the Robert's Rules of Order in the council procedure?
Yes, very simply, under section three, uh, point A, uh, section one, under general, uh, just that Robert's Rules of Order is the, uh, procedure for the body.
I, I would, I would prefer that we do them under separate items. Can we do that?
No, so we've got, we've got a motion on the table to approve the amendment as is. We now have an amendment to that motion, so let's consider that amendment first before moving back to the motion. So there's a motion, there's an amendment on the table to add Robert's Rules. And President Cobal, if you call for a, a second.
Is there a, a second to amend the Resolution 02120E?
Second.
Second by Sam.
Discussion?
Any discussion?
Yeah, uh, uh, on a personal note, I've been a mayor, um, I've been involved in many political situations. We tried Robert's Rules of Order, and I'm gonna tell you, it caused all kinds of problems. Unless you're willing to pay an individual who knows that book, every page and every sentence, and is willing to sit here and tell you when you screwed up, and you can't do that, and you can't say that, and that's the wrong word, and that's the wrong comma, and that's the wrong period, you will regret it. And I'm talking about personal experience. We tried it, and man, what a mess that was, the arguments over this page, that page, and we got rid of it in Greenfield, it just did not work.
Any more discussion?
Yeah, I do. Um, I'd just like to say, if it's so terrible, then why is AIM trying to push that? That is one of the big things they pushed when we went to our new, newly-elected officials training.
If I may, it is, um, uh, discussed in the handbook, but I understand your point, Brad. If it's too rigorous or too confining, maybe that's not what we need. Um, if I may, um, work with me here, maybe I'm amending my amendment, but perhaps very simply the suggestion could be, um, in the document to, uh, the statement to pass, a second in motion must receive a majority vote of all elected council members, and the amendment could be after the motion is stated and discussion is open and closed. Uh, that might be a viable option to, um, uh, not be as rigorous as Robert's Rules of Order, but, uh, definitely allows that, that flow of the meeting that I think would benefit residents. What do you?
Councilmember Ver, do you mind pointing out where that is?
Yeah, sure, um, section three, uh, section A1 general, it's a second-to-last line there. To pass, a second in motion must receive a majority vote of all elected council members. And then my, uh, suggestion is, after the motion is stated and discussion is open and closed. After the motion is stated and the discussion open and closed. So Chris, do I, um, therefore make a amendment?
So, if you're, if you're, yeah, we're, we're gonna specify your new amendment to just state that, to place a second in motion, um, as Councilmember Ver just stated, uh, motion must receive a majority vote of all council members after the motion is stated and discussed, is, and discussion is open and closed. So the requirement that there's, just specifying that there's discussion-
Correct.
-before a member's open and closed. So that's the amendment now that's on the table.
Hold it, where, where are we at with Robert's?
So Robert's-
I think, I think I said, I hear what you're saying, and, um, that might be too rigorous.
Did you withdraw your motion?
Yeah, so we're just further specifying the motion now, Brad, so Robert's Rule. Correct me if I'm wrong on your amendment here. So I think what Councilmember Ver is saying, that the, uh, Robert's Rules of Order reference is out. Now she is amending section three A1 in the rules of procedure by adding that to pass a second in motion, must receive a majority vote of all elected council members. And Councilmember Ver is asking that we additionally add, after the motion is stated and discussion is open and closed. So she's adding that section to say that when you have a motion that's before the body, that it has to receive discussion and voted upon before it's passed. And right now, our statement does not say that it has to receive discussion. It's assumed, but it's not stated in the rules.
Oh.
So I, I think it accomplishes two things here. One, um, if the, uh, Robert's Rules of Order are too onerous and too binding, we have had a set of standards and rules that have been out there that do provide predictability, but in terms of, uh, achieving an outcome that Councilwoman Ver is asking for, which is taking this, the discretion from the chair and saying, you will always call for discussion before you call for the final vote, um, her compromise is we can accomplish that same outcome within the rules that you already have. So I think it achieves both, which is we keep a familiar and consumable set of rules that we already have had and have adhered to for a long time, while at the same time, uh, making sure that we provide for discussion, uh, going forward. I think that's the amendment that you have on the table at the moment.
And I think, Scott, I certainly understand what we're doing. I believe we already do that currently anyways, just out of common courtesy, okay? But I want to make sure that if we're gonna open and close, because those are specific words, open and close, that we don't end up with a filibuster, okay? Somebody coming up here and reading War and Peace, so discussion never gets closed. So again, we're, we're walking ourselves into a, I mean, I think common courtesy is to allow everybody up here who has an opportunity to speak on an item. I don't believe we've ever shut anybody down from having an opportunity to speak on any one whatsoever. What I'm trying to avoid is I'm trying to avoid, you know, pitfalls for us that, that kind of get us into trouble. So I would be against either one i- in, in that case, because I believe just common courtesy of our council members would dictate that we open and close the discussion.
Perhaps a-
So that's all I'm trying to say, is I think we're being a little bit redundant.
Councilmember Peterson, perhaps a fair compromise there is, you would still reiterate that the, it set the discretion of the chair to close the discussion, but there needs to be a formal call for discussion, so you need, uh, the chair will always have the ability to call for a vote. I don't think anyone's trying to take that away, so you, you would have that ability. But I think to Councilwoman Ver, what you're trying to accomplish is that just for the predictability, that everyone will recognize the fact that there will be discussion, the opportunity for discussion after every motion. Is that a fair?
Absolutely, well said.
So the chair can't stop that?
Yeah, the chair has a prerogative to call for a vote at, but there, there's just a half-step here that we're gonna, you know.
Is this a second reading, so it's kind of like what I was talking about a minute ago?
There's been a motion on the table to, to adopt this reading. So what you're dealing with right now is an amendment from Councilmember Ver. So we need, that amendment is still out there.
No, I don't know, if it's approved, when does this occur? Is it second reading, like I was talking about, it comes back?
Yeah, right, right, so it'd be after, I mean, on first readings now, you're gonna have simple discussion and direction on, like for a planning and zoning matter, but on voting items, you're gonna have discussion before you call for a vote.
To be clear, just so we clarify, we're not talking about a public hearing or public comment.
Yes.
We're talking about a call for council members to have the ability to discuss it prior to the vote.
I thought we always had that.
I thought we did too.
Yeah, I'm ignorant here, I thought that was the way we ran the meeting for four years.
Do you feel that you don't have the ability to discuss things? I'm trying to-
Well, I've only, I have only sat in one meeting, and I think President Cobal has done an excellent job. I'm, I'm speaking about my experience, um, observing the meetings, that I haven't seen that happen as a matter of practice, and, um, that is my suggestion. And, and also frankly, as someone new to the table, taking that extra breath of opening discussion and closing it certainly would be a benefit to me and I, and I think observers too.
Because I think we've, I mean, I've been here 17 years, and 16 of the 17, we've had what I'm trying to get back to, which is why I put this on the agenda, and it was to have a first reading. I view first readings as, it's here, let us know so that we can let our constituents know. Then it goes to the Plan Commission, we have the formal public hearing, that information comes back to us, and then at that point, we open it up for any public comment. That's the process I like, because I like the public to know. They can let it marinate, they can understand, they can have questions, they can go to the public hearing, they can go to the Plan Commission, and then when they come back, that's the step that I like to have, that order happen. That's why I've proposed it the way it was in-
Yes, and I totally agree with that. I'm very happy that, that we'll revert back to that way, I think that's good. This is general, um, this section of the procedures is just general administration of the meeting.
This would apply to any item, David.
To any item up for, about?
Every item would have discussion.
And again, I'm still in the same position that I believe we've done this all along, and I don't think there's any reason to formalize it. I think we've been more than cordial to everybody. We've given the public, when we see the public out there, given plenty of access to speak. We're not trying to shut anybody down. We never have tried to shut anybody down from speaking, so I'm gonna be a no.
So we have a, we have an amendment that's been revised by Councilmember Ver, which needs to be seconded again, and then, if somebody would like to make that second.
Just like to say something. I feel like part of the issue is, is we just want to make sure that, you know, common courtesy, and then this is what we're doing. You know, since it's common courtesy, you can just take it away at any moment. We're just trying to make sure that, you know, it's followed every time. I think that's, that's what we're trying to get at.
Just a matter of practice. So there's a, uh, motion on the table by Jocelyn and a second by Sam. I'm gonna close the discussion and call for a vote. All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Aye.
Nay.
May we have a roll call vote?
Can you do that?
You have a list?
Cecilia Cobal?
Uh, nay.
Selena Soller?
Nay.
David George?
Nay.
Pete Peterson?
No.
John Weingart?
Nay.
Todd Zimmerman?
Nay.
Brad DeReemer?
Nay.
Samantha Delong?
Aye.
Jocelyn Ver?
Aye.
So now, Council President Cobal, you're back to the original motion that was on the table to approve the resolution.
And I'll make that same motion to approve item number seven.
Okay, there's a motion to approve the Resolution 012120E. Do I have a second? Second by John, okay, um, any more discussion?
Is this for final approval then, or does it go to a third? Is this for final approval then, or does it go to a third?
This has been for final approval.
This would be final.
I'm going to close discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion passes. Okay, we're on to item eight. It's R 021720, request to approve a resolution adopting the fiscal plan for the QCOM lot two annexation. So we have staff here to share what this resolution's about.
Good evening. For the record, Megan Schaefer with the Planning and Zoning Department. I'm going to present items eight and nine together as they deal with the same annexation request. So this is for a voluntary annexation of the QCOM property located on the south side of 126th Street, just west of I-69. This item was before you last month for a public hearing. It is now before you for the adoption of the fiscal plan and for third reading. The fiscal plan is a requirement of Indiana Code, which looks at the costs and revenues associated with the annexation and is required prior to the adoption of the annexation ordinance. Staff recommends approval of the resolution adopting the fiscal plan and then approval of the ordinance approving the voluntary annexation. I'm here to answer any questions you have.
Just as a reminder to the public, that the voluntary annexations generally follow a three-step process. During last month's meeting, the council held its initial reading of the annexation ordinance and conducted its public hearing in accordance with Indiana law, which is step one. Prior to adopting the voluntary annexation ordinance, Indiana law requires that council approve the fiscal plan, which is step two, and step three will be the final reading of the annexation ordinance, which is the next step on this agenda. Are there any questions for staff? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Resolution 021720.
Second.
Motion by Pete, second by Todd. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor to approve resolution 021720, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion, resolution passes. Item number nine is 012120. It's a request to approve a voluntary annexation of one lot known as QCOM lot two property located at 11219 East 126th Street. And it consists of 0.39 acres. This is a third reading, and as I mentioned, item nine is the final reading of the voluntary annexation ordinance. The council has now conducted an initial reading of the ordinance, held a public hearing, and approved the fiscal plan for this voluntary annexation. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay. Motion by Pete, second. Do I have a second? Second by Selena. Any discussion? I'll close the discussion. We have a motion to approve, and we have a second. All those in favor of approving ordinance 012120, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. The ordinance passes. Item 10 is 012120A. It's a request to approve a text amendment to the Parkside PUD ordinance concerning the use and development of real estate. This is a final reading. The council heard an introductory reading of the ordinance during our January council meeting. The ordinance went before the city's planning commission, which conducted a public hearing regarding the matter, and a certified proposal came back to the council where it now appears for its final reading. So I will turn it over to our staff.
For the record, Jesse Beauchel with Planning and Zoning. The item before you tonight is ordinance number 012120A, which is a text amendment to the Parkside PUD, amending the commitments concerning the use and development of real estate along State Road 37. Subject sites located north of 126th Street, south of 131st, and east of State Road 37. As part of the State Road 37 improvements, the overall right-of-way increased, leading to a decrease in the overall front setback for numerous properties along State Road 37. The Parkside PUD is one of those developments that was affected by the right-of-way increase, and as such, made the majority of those properties that front 37 and the PUD legally non-conforming, making it difficult to redevelop any of these sites or develop the properties. We are seeking approval for the text amendment to the Parkside PUD ordinance to decrease the required front setback of 50 feet along State Road 37 to 25 feet. The text amendment is sought as an increase, because of the increase in the right-of-way needed for the 37 improvements, and has made, and as I said, made most of those properties legally non-conforming. As such, the proposed text amendment would bring those properties into compliance and would allow for future development to occur along State Road 37 and the Parkside PUD. This is the final reading, and so, and it received unanimous favor at Plan Commission. Staff would say that due to your guidance, we will be bringing more of these back before you. There are eight total PUDs on 37 that will be having text amendments. That is it. If you have any questions, I can answer those.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve ordinance 012120A?
So moved.
Motion by Pete, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Todd, is there any discussion? No discussion, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor of approving ordinance 012120A, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. Ordinance passes. Item 11 is 012120C, consideration of a tax amendment to chapter six and chapter eight of the Unified Development Ordinance, UDO, as it relates to open space standards. This is the final reading. This item was before our council for final reading during our January meeting, and then the council decided to amend the certified proposal, specifically removing section 6.9.2 from the original ordinance. The council further directed the Plan Commission to develop concepts to be considered in place of the exemption that the council removed from its amendment. So now I'm going to turn it over to Tony Bagado to share his information.
Yeah. Good evening. Just briefly cover again, this is going to move our non-residential standards for open space into chapter six and out of chapter eight. You're providing as a separate ordinance for discussion, there's an in lieu fee option to be discussed as part of the existing standards. And so the way to deal with the two-acre lots or smaller is to build in a lower percentage fee for that. And then, again, we're reducing the overall percentages that exist today. So currently, if you're zone C1 or C2, you're held to a 12% open space standard, that'll go down to 7%. If you're C3 or I1, it's currently a 15%, would go down 10. And then PUDs are currently at 20, and will be reduced down to 15. So across the board, we're reducing the overall percentage by lesser amounts to lessen the impact we've had on commercial development. And then there was Plan Commission discussion with the text, the amended ordinance that went back. I tried to highlight in my staff report, there was a lot of different talking points. And basically, the Plan Commission said, well, here's all the points, and bring it back to council for their final decision. So the points focused really on what was fair versus other considerations. Are we doing the right thing? Is there an option for variance when it's related to an in lieu fee? And then there was a question about equity and litigation around that. So all I can really say was, Plan Commission seemed overwhelmed a little bit, and so was staff in trying to say, there's really not any other options. I think it really comes down to, do we want to be fair across the board, but then still building incentive for entrepreneurs? And the, and the way I think that would be done is to have the fee, the in lieu fee be reduced. And again, they can always provide art or meet their open space standards other ways. The fee is not required. It's not an impact fee that a developer has to pay. It's an option in complying with the standards. And so that's why it's an in lieu fee. So instead of putting the open space in, they can pay a fee that goes towards public art for non-residential. On the residential side, that fee goes to parks, and that has not been, that's not part of this discussion, because that's been pretty standard across the board, and Noblesville has that same process today. So again, we're just here before you to say that the Plan Commission sent back the amended ordinance the way the city council adopted it. So no other changes are proposed. We would, I would recommend that we just adopt it and see how this goes for a year or two, like we did with the last ordinance. And if more changes are needed, I can continue to tweak that. But again, the option would be, in the, in the payment in lieu ordinance, you'll see separately at the end of the agenda, it's a 50% assessed value on properties larger than two acres, and it would be a 20% assessed value on properties less than two acres. So that would be the compromise in trying to address the entrepreneurship aspect for businesses and fishers. So with that, staff's recommending approval as the ordinance presented.
Thank you, Tony. Do I have a motion to approve ordinance 012120C?
So moved.
Motion by Pete, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Selena, is there any discussion?
Tony, oh, go ahead. Once again, so I want to make sure, because the other night, it was, yeah, for two acres or less, it is?
It would be a 20% assessed value if they want to pay the fee, instead of 50%.
Okay.
Yeah.
I've wrestled with this a lot. So you've done a fantastic, seriously, my comments have nothing to do with your work. You've done a fantastic, you and your staff, amazing job. It's outstanding. I, if I don't totally understand something and the implications it's going to have on potential entrepreneurs, I can't vote yes, but that doesn't mean I'm not, I understand what we're trying to accomplish here. I just, I don't want to hurt somebody trying to start a business and adding a fee to them. I just, right now, I just, for art or, or whatever, I don't, I just don't feel like that's something that I want to do, so I'll be a no. But you've done a fantastic job, Tony. I mean, this is, this is great work. And I may be misunderstanding, so that's why I am not going to vote for something that I don't understand the implications on a small business owner.
Is where you are is where we were last month, zero for two acres or under.
Right, I'm at zero.
Okay, I want to make sure, because this is all over the place.
Yes.
Yeah, and, and, and my, being a serial entrepreneur that has built three or four of these two-acre deals. I pushed for zero. And then somebody tried to get to my conscience, is that fair to the guy that's paying something? So I think we've done a good job compromising. The two-acre guy still, 80% reduction, he's not paying 100%. We're down to 20. So my conscience is, well, that's fair to the guy that's 2.1 acres and has to pay it. So I understand, because I fought last month for zero, because I was in that boat.
And that's just, yeah, that's just where I'm at right now. But I, I get where we're trying to go. I understand it. I.
Let's, let's remember, because, and we all struggle with this sitting on Planning Commission, the three of us making the comments are on Planning Commission, that they always can put public art out and not pay a fee.
Or, or they can put outdoor seating or bench areas.
There's a number of things that can occur where they don't pay a fee.
Correct. And I want to, and I want to specify that tonight. Because that ordinance, that's a separate ordinance. So tonight, if, for example, if this didn't pass, they actually would be held to the higher percentages, and they don't have a fee to even pay.
Right.
So currently, every developer has to comply with the open space standards, and there's no option for compliance with the fee. The fee hasn't been adopted yet. So, and they'll be held to the higher percentages. So the ordinance today basically is reducing the percentages.
Right.
What we got rid of was an exemption that doesn't exist today, and it won't exist going forward. So pretty much what we're doing is just reducing the percentage to lessen the impact. But if, if for some reason it didn't pass, then we're still stuck with the higher percentages, and it doesn't help the building, the developers at all.
Right. And I think Tony makes a very good point. Again, we're, we're trying to help out every which way we can to try to spur development, but while also trying to maintain a public art or open space standard, which we want to continue to have in our community, to make it livable, and make it pretty, and do everything that we try to do here. So I applaud you on this, because it's still a very difficult concept. I think we should watch it as it goes forward. I will be in favor of this, obviously, because I think it's a, it's a move in the right direction. And again, I don't want to stop people from putting that public art aspect in, into the open space standards, which we need to continue to make our, our community vibrant, so.
I agree with Pete. I'm very much in support of this. I think you found a clever compromise, and this was a good exercise, at least for me to observe all the different viewpoints that were thrown into the mix. At the end of the day, I feel like the standards should represent what the community values the most, and we value that from any type of business and any type of, or any size of, of land. So I just think it's a good compromise, and it went through a good process to get there. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to close the discussion, call for a vote. We have a motion to approve ordinance 012120C, and that's been seconded. All in favor of approving this ordinance, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
When nay, that ordinance passes. Okay. We're moving on to item 12, 021720. This is a request to approve a rezone from R2 Residential to PUDR for a new single-family residential development to be called Iron Point, and this is a first reading. After tonight, this item will go before the Plan Commission, where it will conduct a public hearing and certify a proposal back to the council for its final consideration. So tonight, we have staff that's going to share some more details about this development.
Again, Megan Schaefer with the Planning and Zoning Department. So Polte Homes is requesting a rezone of approximately 20 acres. That's currently zoned R2 to Planned Unit Development Residential. The new zoning district will be known as the Iron Point PUD, and is generally located on the south side of 106th Street between Mallinckoff Road and Fall Road. The project consists of 52 single-family residential lots, including open space and tree conservation areas. The product is going to be targeted towards empty nesters with bedrooms on the main floor, and then the option for lofts and basements. The development is proposed to follow the R5 residential district with a density of about 2.6 dwelling units per acre. The petitioners are asking for a reduction in the lot and setback dimensions, but will exceed the minimum building area requirements and the architectural standards of the UDO. So here you can see kind of a comparison between what would be required under the R5 district, and then what they are proposing under the Iron Point PUD. They are proposing to preserve trees along the perimeter of the development. These will all be placed in common area and will not be on private property. To meet the open space requirements, the detention pond is proposed to be utilized as a neighborhood amenity with a trail that wraps around the pond and will connect to the future path on 106th Street. There are proposed to be two access points. One will be connecting to the existing Stub Street in Windermere, and this is requirement of the UDO. A&amp;F Engineering has reviewed the development for traffic and access concerns. They have made recommendations to the second access point on 106th Street that will alleviate the increase in traffic caused by this development. These recommendations were provided to you via email on the memo, but then there are also printed out copies in front of you tonight. Here are a few examples of the proposed architecture. As mentioned, this does exceed the requirements of the UDO. The PUD includes 15 home elevations. There is proposed to be an elevated architecture on the rear elevations for percentage of the lots identified with the red and black dots on this concept plan. The enhanced features would include two options out of, off of a building offset, masonry water table, sunroom, covered porch, additional material, or an enhanced window treatment. This will go to the PUD Committee for Architectural Review in March. This item is before you tonight for first reading to obtain feedback. It will go to Plan Commission on March 11th for the public hearing. We also have Stephen Harden here with the now, and let me get this right, Fager Drinker, Drinker, Biddle, and Reith Law Firm to present the item on behalf of Polte.
Got to add a few more.
Thank you, Megan. Good evening, Madam President, members of the city council. For the record, my name is Steve Harden. I'm a partner of the law firm of Fagri Drinker, is what we're now known as by short. Probably in a year, it'll just be Fagri. But thank you, Megan, for your work on this project, and Tony as well. We appreciate all the work we've done. Megan did a good job of giving an overview. I'll just kind of give you a little bit of a big picture, too. So these, these homes are expected to range from in the low 300s to the mid 400s. And it is, as Megan mentioned, these are aimed at the age-targeted, that group of people in the 45 to 65-year-old range. There'll be optional maintenance, lawn maintenance, snow removal, mulch and weed preservation or termination as well offered to the, to the residents. We did receive today the memo from A&amp;F Engineering. We're confident we can work through that with the staff and with A&amp;F Engineering, so that doesn't seem to be, present a big issue for us. What we have historically done prior to the city council switching back to what the town council used to do, as David remembers, to having a first reading, we would have, when we send out our notice of the public hearing, we would then also have an informal neighbor meeting in advance of that public hearing. So we'll be sending our notices out for the public hearing yet this week, and we've arranged for a neighborhood meeting as well at the. for a neighborhood meeting as well at the nearby elementary school, and we'll be meeting with our neighbors at that time as well to talk about the project. The one thing that we have already heard and have had some discussions with some of the neighbors in Windermere, and I imagine some of the council members might have heard about this as well, was that in Windermere, the, you can see on the concept plan a little bit, and if you've driven it, it's one of the larger cul-de-sacs, bulbs that I've seen here in Fishers, and I believe that many of the people, I think they're going to, they're obviously here this evening as well, they're going to speak, I think, towards the end of the, the meeting during the public comment period. But one of the things I think that, and I personally know some of the people that live on that street, on that cul-de-sac, are friends of our family, and a lot of them moved in there not knowing that that was actually a stub street. So when we have stub streets that are, streets that tee into a farm next door, and today the ordinance that the city has requires the developers in those situations to put a sign out that says, this is going to connect to the farm or the undeveloped land next door, so everyone's on notice. So I think what we'll hear, what we've been hearing already, was that people didn't know that that was going to be connected. It looks like a cul-de-sac, I mean, it is a cul-de-sac, and it wasn't maybe clear to some of those folks, and so we, we recognize that. Polty on their own, as well as the neighbors, have already both separately suggested that isn't there a way we could possibly do a pedestrian connection and an emergency connection, similar to what was done at the Haven, another Polty Empty Nestor Neighborhood on Cumberland, just north of 96th Street, which has a main entrance and then also it has a pedestrian, or an asphalt connection as an emergency connection point. We all know from, good planning normally means we need to connect to the adjacent properties, and sometimes that causes consternation for the neighbors that were living in the existing neighborhood who didn't realize that was going to happen. So that's a balance for the City Council to think through. Polty is completely, and we've told the neighbors that we've talked to already, Polty is fine with having a pedestrian connection, an emergency connection, so that there's not the traffic flowing through that cul-de-sac to get out to 106th Street. So we'll be at the City Council's discretion on how you want to handle that. We'll work with you and the staff and the neighbors as we go through the process. And as I mentioned, we do have a, we'll be having our invitations going out to the neighbors for our neighbors meeting coming up, but we'd be happy to answer any questions that you have for us this evening, or if you have any homework you'd like us to think about as we go to the Plan Commission. We'll take good notes and be prepared to respond at the Plan Commission, as well as to give you a report when we come back for second reading. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve. I'm going to open it up now for any discussion or any comments that the council might have.
Certainly one comment I have, thank you, Cecilia. Had a number of emails from a number of residents in Windermere. I live in Windermere myself, but I'm on the east side of Molinkoff in a different area of Windermere, but it is one HOA and one group that, and it's actually in Pete's district, so, and the one concern they have is, is that, that one little exit out there and, on Fairwoods and how that's going to be taken care of, and there's some folks that have some concerns about that, something we need to make sure, and I guess is, I want to give some of the comments that I'm hearing from, not necessarily my constituents, but it doesn't matter to me, if someone calls me, I'm going to call them back and talk to them about it. And that's what I've heard, just to kind of, just to give you guys some information. We might be really sensitive to that area. It's, it's a, a great area. I, I think everyone's supportive of this development. They like, you know, the, the quality and, and what the product that's become and everything, they're just, that's their major concern.
Thank you.
Just, just to let you know.
Thank you.
Steve?
Yes, sir.
Can I put these up? Wait, here. Oh.
Thank you, Megan.
Okay, put this in first, I'll ask.
Sure, I'll, I'll do what you ask. Thank you, thank you, sir.
On the right away, so the right away goes to the property line on that street, so you don't have to buy a foot type thing?
That's correct.
Okay, because I know in the past, developers stopped one foot and then sell the one foot. Okay. The, this works. I don't know why, it doesn't work very good there, but it will over there, the consequence. The rear setback, you, you got a 20-foot conservation, preservation, and then a 20-foot DNU, draining utility easement, and then a 30-foot DNU easement. If you would switch that other piece of paper then, so everybody knows, the, the, from a personal experience out in Britton Falls, the rear setback is 15 feet, and for two years, 218, 19, the BZA would have like 12 cases every month, and 50% of them came from Britton Falls because of a 15-foot rear setback. In Britton Falls, and this is for the, also the empty nester older, we spend a lot of time on our backyards. In fact, we spend lots of money adding on to our backyards so we can enjoy it. And as what happened in Britton Falls, we were locked in and couldn't do anything. We had to keep coming to BZAs to get permission every month. The unfortunate thing is, there was a lot of contractors out there that were going to do the job, told the client, oh, we'll take care of that for you for $1,000. Was charging them $1,000 just to come here to get the, what, $250 BZA thing? So you finally listened to us in Britton Falls and we changed the ordinance so that we could invade the 15 feet. Okay, if this is going to be empty nesters, we're going to have the same problem here. You're going to have 10 feet is all you're going to have from that 30-foot easement to the back of the house. You can't put anything out, you can't put a patio to set out at night in the daytime and have coffee or wine at night or whatever. So it, it doesn't make sense to me to go ahead again and put a subdivision in that's going to have problems that we know we've already created. So we either need to limit, the depth of that house can only be like 50 feet, or make the lots 150 foot deep, something to allow these people. The thing that, and I'm not, don't take this negatively, but Polty refuses to build outside that wall for us. Every time we came, we said, would you build this? Would you build this? Screening porch, no, we stopped at the wall. So we had to pay for all that after the fact, after we moved in. It would have been nice to have it part of the house. So I'm telling you, way over 50% of the people in Britton Falls have had a problem. We thank the mayor for being a leader and Tony changing the ordinance, so at least now you can invade that by just coming and getting your building permit. But it, it has been a pain, and I'm looking at these based on the data that was given to me, and we're going to create the same problem out there, and that's, it's not going to work. Okay, thanks, Steve.
Thank you, thank you.
Any more discussion from councilmen?
How do the prices of these houses compare to other comparable targeted 55 and up communities?
I would say they're in the middle, middle of the market. I'm sorry, for the record, David M. Compton, Vice President, Polty Homes of Indiana, resident of Fishers since 1993. So some councilmen along, it's probably right in the middle. You look at probably Lake Stonebridge is in the 600s. You look at some of the other empty nesters in the community are in the 400s. This would be probably, you know, the, as Steve mentioned, 300 to 450. So the cost of land and building materials are just where it is today. So we, we want to provide, our, our goal in this commitment, as it was in the Haven, was provide opportunities for longtime Fishers residents to stay in Fishers, to sell their house and be able to afford to buy a house, but to buy it in a neighborhood with the like-me crowd without being age restricted like the neighborhood, the Del Webb, we have to be 55 and older. In this case, all the floor plans and councilmen will have a master on the main, but it's not required to be 55 years or older to live here. So in my personal opinion, it's probably right in the middle of the market where it is today. Does that answer your question?
May I state clearly, I just want to be sure I have this. The square feet that is being proposed, home sizes ranging from 1683 square feet to 1953 square feet, they're all ranches in this 52 home neighborhood, correct?
Yes, councilman, councilwoman. Each house does have the option of a basement, though, and when Polty builds a basement on this particular si- series, if you build a 1683 square foot house, you will get a 1683 square foot basement, or close there, too. So it's full basements. The second thing is every home in this series offers a loft option, which is from approximately 600 to just over 800 square feet. This allows you to have an extra bedroom upstairs, an extra bathroom, and maybe an open area or a storage area. Grandkids come visit or guests, you don't, again, the master's on the main. So these houses have those base square footages that you described. They can go down, or they can go up, or they can go both. So the square footage does get bigger than the range you talked about, but the base range...
The base.
Base range is what you said.
Is 1683 to 1953, and the expected price range is 350,000 to 450,000, correct?
Probably more like 300 to 450. You're going to get a little bit, you're going to get a, you're going to get a range. You're going to get somebody who walks in and says, I just want the base model. You're going to come in, somebody who says, I want the biggest model, and I want a full basement and I want a loft. Now all of a sudden, you've got a house that's over 4,000 square feet, right? When you add the basement plus that loft, and so it's, this buyer has a pretty big range depending on the size of the home they're, they're moving out of.
The additional comment I would like to make, since this is supposed to be directed to empty nesters, of which I am one, so, but just a few weeks ago, the city put forth its age-friendly plan, of which housing and aging in place was of utmost importance. So I share that with you, too, as, to consider, especially as we think of amenities and ways that homes can be developed in a way that really encourages ages, aging in place.
We appreciate that, and we will bring forth those commitments at, at Plan Commission.
And the only comment that I have is more for Tony. Tony, will we bring this back to Plan Commission? I think we've had discussions about this in the past, and I want to make sure I'm clear on what our UDO standards are for ingress egress into, into places. I mean, I appreciate, you know, Polty and, and wanting to look at it as a pedestrian crossway, but I just want to make sure it's not crossway with the UDO standard, that all of a sudden we're going to go through TAC and they're going to go, no, you know, so I don't want, I need to understand, so when we come to Plan Commission, let's just say what the UDO standard says.
Yeah, the development, the development code requires it, so if the council wants that to be not required, that could be a commitment by the developer, and then we'll put it into the PUD, so in this specific case, the PUD would override the development, the UDO.
Right, okay.
But again, we would, yeah, the development code requires it off the, and they weren't requesting that to be removed, so if that's removed as a commitment, we could, we'd have to change that.
I think Councilmember Peterson, to your reference, some of that was inspired both from connecting the community, but also from public safety. There are some thresholds of a number of homes with having dual access. So beyond that, to your point about getting to TAC, when we get to Plan Commission, we'll make sure staff has talked to the fire and police department and find out what are the base needs from a public safety perspective and how we can creatively solve that problem if, in fact, the council wishes not necessarily to have that connection, but we do want to make sure we look out for life safety issues. We'll answer both those questions prior to the Plan Commission.
Yeah, normally 50 lots or more, fire wants a secondary access, so I think at least we'd want it to be a gated access for fire.
Just want to be prepared at Plan Commission, so we can discuss that.
Yeah. Just so you, one, one question, just, I don't need an answer tonight, but as it goes through the, the Plan Commission comes back, but it doesn't look like there's a path connection on the north side of the property, which would be on the south side of 106th. Just wanted Windermere, but it doesn't connect.
It may not be, apparently, but there will be a trail.
Okay. Okay.
Correct, yeah, on the right away?
Yes.
Yes, there will be a trail.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to close the discussion and I'm going to ask if there's a motion to have first reading. Okay. Motion by Pete, there's been a, been given a first reading. As we mentioned prior, the, this will now go to the Planning Commission, who will conduct a public hearing on this matter, March 11th, 2020. Okay, we're now on to item 13, it's 021720A. This is a request to approve a voluntary annexation of one lot known as the Iron Point Property, located at 10777 East 116th, 106th Street, and it consists of approximately 19.93 acres. This is the first step in the voluntary annexation process to conduct the initial reading and hold the statutorily required public hearing, and so I'm going to turn it over to staff for presentation.
Again, Megan Schaefer with the Planning and Zoning Department. So this property is the one that we just discussed, the Iron Point Property. Don't want to add to any confusion here, but it does require a public hearing specifically for the annexation portion, so I just want to clarify that the public hearing that's about to be opened is limited to concerns with the annexation, which would be incorporating this lot into city limits. There will be a public hearing for the rezone and the proposed development on March 11th at 5 o'clock, 5 o'clock, or, I'm sorry, 6 o'clock PM here in City Hall. Staff's here to answer any questions you have, but we do recommend that you hold first and second reading and a public hearing. This item will be back next month for the adoption of the fiscal plan and third reading.
Okay.
I've got a question for staff. As we look to the lots to the west, Megan, are they unincorporated Fishers?
Correct.
Okay, so we should probably reach out to those landowners, because if this, if this goes through, there potentially will be access points for utilities, and I would certainly love to bring them into the city, since they're basically in the city, and I want to make sure they have that option when they're there, because utilities are going to be awfully close, or at least a lot closer than they were before. So I want to make sure they're given that opportunity to potentially voluntarily annex themselves in as well.
Yeah, no, that's a great recommendation. When the petitioner reaches out for the public hearing, sending the, to the surrounding property owners, we can maybe include in that mailing those options.
Yeah, to the west, Pete, there's not that many homes, actually. They're mostly estate-sized homes, so a good opportunity to get...
I just want to bring them in, Megan.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so I'm, I'm going to call the public hearing, just so that everybody knows, a voluntary annexation requires a public hearing. At this time, I'm going to open it up, and any member of the public wishing to speak about this voluntary annexation can come forward. You'll be given three minutes if you want to state your name for the record. This is just dealing with the, the annexation.
My name is Steve Mank. I live on Fairwoods Drive, and I think I speak for the rest of the residents that are here, that we are in favor of the development and the annexation.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak, just on the annexation? Okay, seeing that, I'm going to close the public hearing, and is there any other discussion?
Have first reading.
Okay, there's a motion to have first reading. First reading, this physical plan and final reading of this voluntary annexation will appear at the March, at the, at the March council meeting. So now we're on to item 14, 021720B. This is a request to approve a voluntary annexation of one lot known as Accian's Property, located at 6110 East 106th Street, and it consists of approximately 9.73 acres. Tonight, it's a first, second reading and a public hearing. Again, this is the first step of the voluntary annexation process, that to conduct the initial reading and hold a statutory required public hearing, so now I'm going to turn it to staff for their presentation.
Good evening. For the record, Andrew McGee, planner with the Planning and Zoning Department, excuse me. The annexation before you tonight, again, is a voluntary annexation. This is at 6110 East 106th Street. This is the far west end of 106th. It's actually a private drive portion. So this property highlighted in red is up against the White River. It's just a little less than 10 acres. They are voluntarily annexing so that they can connect to sewer. An approximate run of their connection is highlighted, or is shown in red on the aerial image to your right. This will be the only property on that portion of the private drive of East 106th that is annexing at this time and connecting to sewer at this time. The properties adjacent to this one will not necessarily be any closer than they were already when it comes to sewer connection, because this is running directly from this property owner's house to city property adjacent to the south, so it won't be going through any other properties along the way. So again, we recommend just holding first and second reading and the public hearing for this annexation.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to call for a public hearing. Again, voluntary annexations require a public hearing, and this time, any member of the public wishing to speak about this voluntary annexation can come forward. Please state your name, and you'll have three minutes.
I really wanted some information and I got some of what I needed. I live really close to there. I do not want to be annexed, ever.
Ma'am, can you tell us your address, please, for the record?
Yeah, I can do that. 10620 Ella Road.
Thank you.
And... And, um, uh, it ma- it concerns me when I saw this, that you were gonna try to gobble up everybody there, and I don't want that. And as, as was noted, it, it's a private drive, so, so I don't understand how you annex something. It's almost like taking the middle of a cornfield and saying, we're gonna annex it. So that's very curious to me.
Thank you.
Um, I'd just like to, again, Andrew, um, if I could follow up, um, the concern about, uh, annexing in the middle of nowhere, so to speak. Um, so the state requires that at least one-eighth, um, of the boundary of any property is contiguous, uh, to existing city limits. Um, so in this case, the entire southern border of the property, um, is adjacent to city limits, it's a city park in this case. So they do meet the minimum state requirements, um, for one-eighth, um, continuity. So, yeah, that whole southern border. Um, so that is the reason that they are able to annex, but at this time, um, we're, we're only talking about this one property, um, and, and we don't have any immediate plans or anything else.
Correct me if I'm wrong, just have a question if I may. They're, they're voluntary annexing because they need sewer access, correct?
Correct, and they do meet the requirements to annex.
Is their septic failing?
Uh, that I don't know. I, they, someone bought this house, they've been fixing it up, I can't speak to it more than that.
I mean, that's the only reason they're, they're voluntary, that's the main reason, they, they need sewer access. They, they, either, either their septic tanks failing, or it's going to fail, or they just wanna be.
Or they just want it.
They just want it. I mean, she's, ma'am, she's, they're doing it 'cause they want to. We wouldn't force on anybody, we, I mean.
Wait a second now, John.
Hang on, hang on, we, it's done, done before, but yeah.
Yeah, in, in this situation, it is voluntary.
This is truly someone wanted to do it.
That's correct, yep.
To be clear, uh, involuntary annexation under Indiana statute is very prescriptive, and, and, and very difficult. The thresholds to involuntarily annex someone against their will has become nearly, um, impossible. So the idea that the community is out, uh, involuntarily annexing, can assure folks, not only from just a policy perspective from the city, but also from a state statute standpoint, it's very difficult to do involuntarily.
Ma'am, you may wanna talk to Councilor Peterson afterwards to talk about what, uh, Geist went through of, about ten years ago, so.
More than that, hang on, John.
Yeah, it's been a while. Thank you for coming up, though.
Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Uh, any other, um, discussions, council? Do I have a motion to have first reading?
Have first and second reading.
Okay. Uh, let's see, first reading given, okay, so this, um, first reading of this voluntary annexation will appear at the March council meeting and the fiscal plan. Okay. Uh, item fifteen, zero two one seven two zero C. This is a consideration of a text amendment establishing a payment in lieu of open space fee as it relates to the open space standards within the unified developmental, development ordinance. This is a first reading, um, tonight, it's an introductory reading of this ordinance. After tonight, this item will go before the Plant Commission, where it will conduct a public hearing and certify a proposal back to the council for its, its final consideration. So we have, uh, Tony Bagato with staff to, to give a presentation.
Yeah, thank you once again for this last item. Uh, this is the payment in lieu, uh, ordinance that I highlighted in the last discussion. And just wanna mention that this discussion goes back to two thousand and sixteen. In the Fishers twenty forty plan, one of the implementation sections of our Parks Master Plan talks about creating a payment in lieu fee, uh, similar to Noblesville, 'cause they did have one in place. And again, this isn't in lieu fee, so this is not forced upon developers. As part of our open space standards, they have to have a certain percentage. So just for simple math, uh, PUDs require twenty percent in residential, and now fifteen in commercial with the new standard. And so in our current standards, our, we say out of that twenty percent, if you're a residential developer, or fifteen for commercial, half of that has to be active open space, and then the other half can be passive. So like your green space, your buffers is the passive, your active is anything that has trails or any kind of amenities. And in commercial, again, that was the one that's a little bit more of a challenge, so we expanded that to include outdoor dining, uh, patio seating, um, and then public art, it's kinda the big thing we added in commercial for non-residential development. And so in two thousand seventeen, we adopted the new standards with the fifty percent allocation of passive versus non-passive. And we put in the ordinance that there would be an in lieu fee option for developers. And the developers we met with back in two thousand seventeen included residential developers and commercial developers, all concluded that, you know, that having the fees at least as an option is a good thing, because there's something they, they get to reduce their requirement by just paying a fee. And so what we're presenting tonight is now the option for that fee to actually finalize it. So if a developer wanted to utilize it, it's in place. And again, it is part of the code, so this is just putting the numbers in place. So for a residential fee, there's three options. If you're within a quarter mile of a park, you could get a seventy-five percent reduction. If you're within a half mile of a park, it's a fifty percent reduction. Or if you're, uh, greater than a half mile, then you can get a ten percent reduction of your open space by paying a fee. And these are considered regional parks that are twenty acres or more. And so there, as part of the ordinance and the study that was provided, there's a map showing which parks qualify, and those, those blue zones are the different tiers. So in the middle, there's actually a green zone, which is that first quarter mile. And then the darker blue circle is the half mile, and the lighter blue is if you're greater than a half mile from that park. So if you're building a new development, say for example, the, uh, Iron Point PUD, if they didn't have to put in detention pond, and they wanted more buildable lots, they could pay us a fee that goes towards our Parks Department, and there's a whole breakdown depending on the size and the density and the acreage. So this table, which is also provided in the report, shows, uh, for example, in the, in scenario one, if you're a three acre, or four units per acre, and you're developing within a quarter mile, you can pay the city the seventy-five percent fee, which gives you nine buildable more, buildable lots by paying us two hundred and ten thousand dollars. If you went down to, let's just go to the bottom one, which is like apartment complex, twenty-five per unit, and you were doing it at a PUD with twenty percent, they could, they would be required to give us, uh, two and, two acres, uh, two and a quarter acres for open space. Well, if they paid us a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar fee, they can get fifty-six additional units. So residential's pretty easy, they get something in return, they're able to get units because they're reducing the amount of, uh, open space, and they get more buildable land. In commercial, again, it was a little bit more tricky in how do you do that, because typically, commercial developments don't have a lot of park space. And so we came up with a three-tier approach for commercial. Uh, the option one, uh, so it's a sliding scale. If a developer came in and said, hey, I have a, I have a ten percent requirement, and I wanna reduce it up to eighty percent, there's a higher fee, or they can reduce it by forty percent at the lower fee, so it's eighty, sixty, forty, there's three different options as a sliding scale. And then based on that, we showed the option, as I mentioned earlier, we have a one fee for more than two acre lots, and a lesser fee for two acres or smaller. And so in the first example, if you're a hundred square feet under the fifteen percent PUD requirement, you would have to dedicate fifteen thousand square feet of open space. So if you wanted to pay, uh, the eighty percent fee, you could pay a sixty-eight thousand dollar fee, or at the forty percent, you could pay thirty-four thousand, and that reduces that percentage of open space required. And then if you're at two acres or less, and you were doing, uh, basically you would have a six thousand square foot requirement on a forty thousand square foot lot, you'd be paying anywhere from eleven thousand to five thousand. So that's, um, that's the fee scenario for both residential and commercial. And again, this is an option. If the developers wanna put in the open space and put in all the amenities, they don't pay us a fee. This just helps provide options to the development community in complying with our standards, and it's in lieu of the standards, not a, not an impact fee. And so with that, staff is open to any questions, and this is first reading. It, it's being implemented in the UDO, so it will go to Plan Commission March eleventh and have a public hearing, and then back before the council for a final reading.
Tony, do these fees go to the planning department?
They will go into a specific in lieu fund, and for residential, they'll go towards parks, and then for commercial, it's gonna go towards our art commission to use towards public art projects or cultural events.
Okay, so none of it will be used to pay for staff or anything in the plan?
No, it's dedicated to that specific requirement.
Okay, is there a motion to have first reading?
Motion to have first reading.
Motion by Pete, uh, first reading for ordinance zero two one seven two zero C. And like Tony said, this will now go to the Plant Commission, and it will conduct a public hearing and then certify a recommendation back to the council for, for a final consideration. Any, uh, unfinished business or new business, Chris?
Nope.
Okay. Uh, seeing that there's none, I'll now open it up for a community comment. At the beginning of each meeting, we pass out a sign-up sheet for those members who wish to, to address the council at the end of the meeting. And it looks like we do have two individuals that have, um, wanted to come up. Uh, we have Ruth Weaver-Heron. If you could please come up, uh, state your name and your address for the record, and you have, uh, three minutes.
My name's Ruth Weaver-Hayzen, I'm at one oh eight six five Fairwoods Drive. Came to the meeting this evening to try and plead for that sense of community that we have on Fairwoods Drive with the cul-de-sac, and really was delighted. First, I wanna say thank you to all the council members who wrote, uh, and responded to the community concerns. We heard back from a lot of you, because you heard from a number of us, and I wanna express appreciation for that. Steve Harden, uh, Pulte reached out to us when we got here, and I just wanna express appreciation for that. I know we're really early in the process. Um, I think it sounds like there's workable solutions here. Fishers, it's all about building community, and the community on Fairwoods Drive is really strong and very special to us. And I also know that Iron Point will develop that community better if it's not a major thoroughfare through. So just wanna say thank you to you all, and I know we're early and we'll continue the conversation.
Well, thank you very much. Uh, next, we have, um, Dennis Raifa, Riffus, Riffus? Am I saying your last name right?
Raifus.
Denise, yes, sorry, okay. Um, please, uh, state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Uh, yes, my name is Denise Raifus, I live at one two three eight one Wheat Hill Pass. And I am here today in support of, uh, um, Samantha and Jocelyn, with our concerns about affordable housing in Fishers. Um, I have a lot of concerns about the Iron Point community. The proposed pricing for these single-family units is, um, hardly affordable. I actually participate in an organization where I'm involved with a lot of seniors. A lot of people, uh, propose for that age range, and none of them in the group would be able to afford the pricing for these homes. I am a physician in Anderson, uh, and, um, this kinda ties into a larger conversation, which many of my patients travel to Fishers, Carmel, and Zion from Anderson to work those low-wage jobs, and they can't afford to live in the community. So this is something that I would like to see, um, ex, the conversation extended in the future. As empty nesters, I'm reading stats that show that twenty-three percent at the age seventy-five and older still have a mortgage. And thirty-five percent of households headed from sixty-five to seventy-four still have a mortgage. In this day and age in Fishers, if you sell your home, and you're being pushed out, and you try to get one of these downsized communities, more than likely, you're going to end up getting a mortgage if you paid. I'll just throw out a number, say you paid two hundred thousand for your home in, you know, year two thousand. If you sell that home, the property value may have gone up, but if it is a smaller unit, say it's about, um, I don't know, fifteen hundred square feet, you're selling that to try to move into these downsized community for these, um, seniors, you're not, you're gonna end up with a mortgage. So I think this is something that we should consider, because while we're talking about the concept of community, um, community includes people of all, um, races, creeds, and income levels. And, um, I am a new resident to Fishers, but I do, I would like to see more people be, um, be able to live in Fishers and be inclusive, just for those folks who wanna live closer to their children, be involved with their children, their grandchildren's lives. Um, these are not affordable communities for those folks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak at this time, please, please come forward?
Good evening, council, I appreciate your bending the rules a bit, I was kinda curious why we're now having sign-ups, uh, to, to speak. You know, something pops in your mind when you're sitting out there and you haven't signed up. So, uh, I hope you, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. Uh, but my comment had to do with, uh, I'm, I'm all for arts and culture, and I see you're, you're talking about putting arts and culture kinds of things in commercial areas. Um, it, after that developer leaves, and that property becomes purchased by other people or, or, um, other, other entities, if the art needs to be repaired, fixed, or replaced, who's gonna pay for that? And I ask you to consider private roads. That's a big problem. So you might consider, uh, putting something in the ordinance that requires that it be something in the covenants that requires if you have a fountain or some great artwork, and all of a sudden it starts to crumble, you don't have to chase people down and say, who's gonna fix this, who's gonna fix that? Because that could, that could be a big problem. Thank you.
Could you please, uh, state your name?
Oh, sure, I thought everybody knew me. My name is Michael Colby, and I live at seven one zero five Cold Lake Drive here in Fishers. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak at this time? I'm gonna go ahead and close, uh, the community comment period. There's a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second, Mike. John?